Okay, all set? All right, we will go ahead and get started with the regular meeting portion tonight and do a roll call, please, Patty.
Commissioner Chalet, Moyer.
Here.
Knack.
Here.
Carmen. McCaffrey.
Here.
Whitehouse.
Here.
Sarter.
Here.
Any additions or deletions from the agenda tonight?
None from staff.
Thank you, staff. Anyone wish to speak on anything non-agenda related? Thank you, Melissa. She's the only public we ever get. Depending on the meeting, depending on the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes and the work session minutes from January 8th?
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moyer?
Yes.
Knack?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Whitehouse?
Yes.
Sarter?
Yes.
Okay, the new business portion for tonight, we have an amended site plan for thirty seven hundred Cleveland Ave. Staff's got a quick introduction, so I will hand it over to Cody.
Thank you, Chairman Sarter. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. I'm actually going to make just a brief comment and then Paul Whalen, our Senior Planner, is going to present the the staff report and introduction for this application. Just real quickly, I wanted to point out a couple of things and Brandon and Tara Neckel have been great partners in working with town staff to navigate our site plan review process. In this, I don't want to steal any of Mr. Whalen's thunder, but just kind of kind of frame the the context here. This is an existing site in our downtown located right at one of the major entrances into the downtown. It's a pretty visible site and it's one that the Planning Commission, the town, had approved a site plan for Barbecue Love Shack a couple of years ago. It turned a what was once a convenience store and fuel pumps into a more active site after it was vacant for many years. So going through this amended site plan review process was a little bit different than a lot of the site plans that are presented to the Planning Commission where we're starting with a green field, so to speak. And so we acknowledge that Brandon and Tara were really great partners in bringing forward. Here are some different ideas and ways that we can meet the spirit and intent of the land use code as opposed to the strict letter of the law. Because it's an existing site with some site constraints and limitations. And so we do acknowledge that many of our site review criteria are not met one hundred percent as written based on the existing conditions. And we have leaned pretty heavily on, there's a provision in the land use code that allows where an applicant is not meeting the strict letter of the law. If they're presenting a reasonable alternative that meets the spirit and intent of those rules and the Planning Commission approves it, that there is latitude to be flexible on some of those elements. So that was something I wanted to highlight, again, working with good partners to improve on an existing site within our downtown. The other piece I'll briefly highlight and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Whalen is that because this is in our downtown C two zone district, there are criteria that the town has adopted for downtown design guidelines. We included that document in your agenda packet tonight simply because we don't have a lot of site plans in the downtown zone district. Where this Planning Commission has reviewed and been extremely familiar with that document, so we wanted to make sure you had the materials that we're referencing for a couple of the architectural elements. And so that's in your packet. We did go through this and acknowledge that the architectural downtown design guidelines are in fact guidelines. Not every one of them is applicable. They don't have provide strict measurable standards for dimensions, percentages, criteria. They're more general in nature and so we did handle those in a general way with an existing site, making improvements to the existing building that are moving in the right direction for achieving those broader downtown design guidelines. So with that kind of brief introduction, to kind of frame the conversation, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Paul Whalen, who will present the rest of the staff report. Thank you, Paul.
Good evening. Excuse me. The item before you tonight is a request for approval for an amended site plan. For a business at thirty seven hundred Cleveland Avenue. The applicant Tara and Brandon Neckel of Old Colorado Brewing Company and their representatives are here tonight. The site is located in the north central region of the of the town by looking at the boundary map. Basically, it's right in the middle, but it's northern portion along Cleveland and First Avenue. It is located, the address, as mentioned, thirty seven hundred Cleveland Avenue. It's located at the northeast corner of the intersection of First Street and Cleveland Zone C two. Site is approximately point one seven acres. And it's comprised of three lots of the old town of Wellington subdivision that was done in nineteen oh three. Just a little bit of background on this. You see from the slides that this site on the western edge of the town and before the railroad tracks. Was once a gas station. It was designed and developed for a gas station. Which, as the director mentioned, presented a rather difficult site to transition and get current code, landscape and so forth onto that site. But the client was willing to work with us on on providing features and so forth that would create an urban plaza environment. But that was a gas station, I believe. Again, I don't know the exact history on when it was developed, but up until, I believe, it was twenty fifteen or so, the gas station. Remnants of the gas station, I believe the canopies and tank, gas tanks were removed or remediated. But if you click it, Patty, it'll show that what it was in twenty nineteen. You see the canopy and tanks and so forth. It's basically a bare site, just asphalt. What was a utilitarian building, a convenience store, minimal architectural character. But that was in twenty nineteen and then that is twenty twenty three. That is the photo. This is all from Google at the state in the exact same spot. So, but anyway, currently it was is a it was a barbecue, Love Shack barbecue. Site that was approved in twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty three. Colorado, I'm sorry, Colorado, Old Colorado Brewing Company was given the opportunity to purchase the property from the Love Shack owners, which they did do and they are now here before the board. Before the Planning Commission asking for permission to brand it, to improve it. To do some pretty exciting things to the site for their first step of the process. There we go. And again, these are images of the site through its history, through its through its evolution, I guess you could say. But the the red in the middle, that was the site plan that was approved in twenty twenty one when the Love Shack came before the commission. They provided picnic tables. They provided a enclosed, a chain link enclosed area. I guess it served its purpose, but there was nothing aesthetic about it. Again, the building was a convenience store. They modified and retrofitted for the business operation and I believe. Old Colorado, the exact date, I'm not exactly sure, but they were located in on the south side of Cleveland on First Street. It was eighty one twenty one First Street. They occupied a facility at that point, I mean, at that time, and then they moved relocated over to here. And and co-located with and worked with the Love Shack barbecue. As you can see from the from the some of the photos and so forth, there's activity outside a courtyard for. Patrons like to experience the weather and so forth. They also had facilities inside. Patty? And this is, again, this is the exist, this was the approved site plan. The images that you're looking at, that is what this applicant is proposing to improve the site. If you'll just notice that the Love Shack provided eight picnic tables, didn't do a lot to the building. Mostly did some outside, did a fire pit and so forth. And the app, these applicants are proposing some some improvements. They are going to add a pergola. They're gonna have larger picnic tables. They're going to shift the, they're going to shift the ADA parking lot from the east side of the parking spaces to the the west side along First Street. Which makes it closer actually to the gate to get in into the property. They're going to propose a wrought iron fence. A decorative art wrought iron fence. They're going to provide a screen wall along the backside for the trash area and so forth. Trash enclosure. The pergola is going to add character and intimate human scale to the to the facility. Possibly a mural, art mural is going to go against the the red mark on the on the wall there indicates where the mural may possibly go. Which is becoming common in downtown. Could have the low door lights. Other features, I'm trying to recall. Oh, they're going to also do, and you'll see this on the architectural. They're going to do facade changes as well. They're going to update the storefront, character of the building, repaint it. They're just going to add some some general improvements and so forth, kind of branded as their own business and make it their own space. Interior. This right here is the existing interior that was approved in twenty twenty one. Again, it served the purpose for the barbecue facility and they are going to do some modifications on the inside. Which right here, they're going to add the pergola. They're going to rearrange tables, sinks, storage areas with. Add more seating area for 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 patrons and so forth. The idea, I believe, is to open it up, make it make it open and airy. And you'll also see that there's underneath that pergola is actually going to be a garage door. Which they can open up so that the space inside can can communicate with the outside, so it expands that. The the feeling of the the space and so forth that the of the facility inside and out. Patty? And the elevations. Top is the existing, was again, those elevations from twenty twenty one. And what the applicant is proposing is on the bottom. New color, new character, storefront features and so forth, new doors, garage door, new windows, awnings. So it's going to be pretty significant improvements to the site and this facility. And again, they're branding it as their own. This is a business that's been in town and been a part of the downtown fabric for almost ten years now. So they now have their own place that we can welcome them to downtown Wellington and wish them the best of luck in the future. So. Findings. The proposal is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and is compliant with the Town Land Use Code. And I would just state the intent of the Town Use Code, Town Land Use Code. It nurtures and grows local business and helps rejuvenate our downtown. The lot in size is consistent with the the original plat. No buildings or. Structures or anything in conflict with the easements. Existing grade and the drainage, and this has been an existing construction facility for many years and there's no change to the. Great, no proposed changes to the grade or drainage whatsoever. And again, I, there is going to be a, I'll mention very quickly that there is going to be a C dot capital improvement in downtown. And I believe that as that. As that, those that improvement commences, that. The construction will affect downtown, so. There may be impacts to this business as well as other businesses in regards to. The overall design and layout. Downtown obviously is going to have a a new look with this. Capital improvement project that's coming through, going to be coming through town. It complies with the C two zone district. And as mentioned, the intent with the urban plaza and so forth due to limited landscape area, landscape feature and so forth. The applicant is proposing to work with us on urban plaza planters and site features like that and so forth. So staff has recommended approval. And myself, the applicant, their representative is here to discuss any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Commissioners, any questions for Paul or the applicant?
Sorry, I was I was asking the applicants if they wanted to share anything additional in support of their application, so you don't have to, it's just an option.
Be prepared to answer questions. There are clearly many of them. Anybody have anything?
In her packet. My computer's so slow right now. There's the town of Wellington. Recommendations for design considerations. Yes, that helps. You were just sharing with us what the the old information was. Looking at.
You're referring to the downtown design guidelines?
This is, yes, which has changed.
The, so the, what we included in the packet was adopted by the town as the downtown design guidelines. When we adopted the twenty twenty two land use code amendments, that was the recent effort to bring our entire code into a modern standard. This, because it was adopted previously, remains the downtown design guidelines adopted by reference. So so this is this document that we, that's why we included it in your packet, is still the guiding downtown design guidelines. I had. There's a lot of information that's general in nature and not a specific, you can point to, this is satisfied, this is not satisfied. And a lot of it is is geared towards kind of a maintenance standard. If you're repainting your your business. The recommendations are to have like a body paint color for the the majority of the structure, a trim color and an accent color. And some guidelines for how to go about doing that, guidelines for how do you replace trim around doors and windows consistent with a historic downtown feel. And that's, this document is, it's a brief document, it's eighteen pages. Not everything is applicable to every case, but it is what we have adopted for design guidelines. So the way staff interpreted this is, we looked at this in terms of these are the best practice recommendations for downtown storefronts. In this particular application case, the structure was never a historic downtown structure. It was built as a convenience store and fuel pumps. The fuel pumps have been removed. What we have left is the existing block building. And so we felt pretty strongly that not every criteria in here is an applicable criteria for this particular application. But we didn't want to ignore the fact that we have these downtown guidelines. What we tended to focus on from a staff perspective was that there was a consistent architectural theme throughout. Our design standards often refer to four sided architecture, meaning every facade is treated the same. In this case, the east property line is the zero lot line. You never see it, so that standard isn't really applicable. We tried to focus on on the intent and what is the overarching goal for the downtown to move things in a direction where there is a unified theme from an architectural and design standpoint. We focused on what do you do with a block building to move it in the right direction, to be consistent with the purpose and intent of the downtown core district. Which is uses identified for restaurants, bars, taverns, dining, entertainment. And it certainly is staff's opinion that the direction that is being proposed is an upgrade to what's existing. It supports the the outdoor elements for seating, a pergola, and that clearly identifies the entrances at a human scale. There's a lot of abstract thought processes in those design guidelines that are, in staff's opinion, being captured and consistent with the intent of those downtown guidelines. And we do not have a historic structure where some of the historic preservation best practices would be applicable. So we we tried to apply this broad document in a case specific manner as best as staff could could recognize without putting an undue burden on a. A structure that was never intended to have those lentils and transom windows above doors and other elements. Does that, does that help kind of in like the way staff looked at this?
Yeah, and I mean, really, our whole downtown is a little hodgepodge anyways, so I think we're going to have to look at that in many instances.
And and maybe just as as I alluded to and Mr. Whalen alluded to in his presentation too. A convenience store and fuel pumps probably never would have been found consistent with these guidelines. That was a developed or approved at a time different than when those guidelines were adopted and different from where we have today. That type of a development for fuel pumps wouldn't be supported in today's land use code or our downtown design guidelines or zoning. And so it's definitely been a struggle for staff to to look at, how do you apply? We have a square peg in a round hole scenario and staff's feelings and the applicants have done a nice job of presenting. Here's how we're going to take that existing condition and make it better and move it in the direction of these these overarching design guides. And we would expect. Old Colorado Brewing haven't been, having been in Wellington for nearly ten years as a business. Each each year, they've demonstrated the willingness to continue to improve on their site and we expect that that trend would continue. But we recognize there's a means to an end and an end to a means. Staff took the approach that it's moving in the right direction. We don't want to overburden a business to where they can't be opening and operating within the town of Wellington.
It's really great to see, even when the Love Shack came in, we were all very excited to see something come into that building that had been vacant for so long. So since that, it's just gotten better. I mean, things are looking better, so I'm excited about this.
And the fact that it's an amended site plan as well and it's not that old and we're making some very minor, albeit major improvements, minor alterations to the building. There's no reason not to, yeah, not to support it.
Will signage be handled by staff then?
Uh, yes. Mr. Whalen, do you want to answer that and I can back you up if you need it?
Signage? Excuse me. Yes, signage is a separate permitting process that I believe they handle that mainly through building department and then we take and do our reviews through the building department application. Yeah, so we look to that with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and what I would add to to Mr. Whalen's response is. Within the downtown, our sign standards don't allow freestanding monument signs. The the character of the downtown doesn't support that type of a structure. So signage would be expected on the building either as a a flat painted or projecting type of sign. I know that the Wellington Main Streets program has done a a sign grant in the past that, and I. I believe that they're moving in that direction again to to renew that that process. So that's something that that the applicants tonight might be interested in pursuing and town staff would be able to assist with that. The the one other component that I might point out, it's in your staff report that Mr. Whalen prepared regarding the potential of a proposed mural and the example that was provided by the applicants. The the sign standards for the downtown business district states that. Wall sign, painted wall signs would not be facing Cleveland Avenue, that they would face a side yard or a rear yard. And not the front facing Cleveland. A mural is not necessarily a sign in the same context. If the mural were to include Old Colorado Brewing messaging, then that would fall into a sign category because it has commercial content. But if the mural is art based and graphical in nature without any advertising, it's not technically a sign. We pointed this out in the staff report as a means of identifying that it's not necessarily signage where that strict rule would apply. But there is certainly a design aesthetic in the downtown that staff felt was worthy of Planning Commission discussion as to intent of, do we want to continue to. Support murals and artwork that face Cleveland Avenue. There are a couple of existing examples where on the filling station, the Welcome to Wellington is a, it's definitely a mural, not a sign, but it faces Cleveland Avenue. We have other examples where Solda Jalisco, Knack Auto and the the old lumber building have murals and artwork on sides. Where it would fall within that same intent as the sign category to not be on Cleveland Avenue. So what we were trying to highlight here, long story short, there are some differences in how murals have been applied in the past. There's not one hundred percent consistency one way or the other, but there is an opportunity to identify what is the direction. The town and the Planning Commission would like to go in terms of what's appropriate for storefronts facing Cleveland Avenue in terms of painted wall signs and murals. So we pose this as a question, not with a specific direction, since there is some inconsistency in town already.
I'll go on record to say that I am a strong supporter of murals facing the most prominent space for people to see them always.
I don't necessarily disagree. I don't think I'd want one on every single building up and down Cleveland Ave as your main storefront. There probably needs to be some restrictions on that, but yeah, I second, face it, if it's a good mural. It's ironic that you're on the other end as the west entrance to Wellington and the Filling Station has the east entrance mural. So I, that's a design symmetry thing for me. I just like it. I think it's cool.
Well, it also faces, if you're coming in from the west, it does face, because that's our western gateway. So you would be seeing that across that plaza.
In that specific example, I like it a lot on that building. If we want to jump into that as a work session topic and. Maybe give some guidance on murals that do or don't face. I don't think I'd be supportive of every single building in Cleveland having them, but every single building doesn't have the opportunity to do what Filling Station and Old OCP have done. They don't have the wall space, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue. Talk about it another time. I don't want to take up their time with superfluous, non-relevant topics.
No, that's fair. Thanks for the direction. That makes sense to me.
Anything else for Brandon, Tara, Wyatt, Paul, Cody? No. All right, guys. There's a motion here somewhere in there.
You need to take it to the public?
Melissa?
Did you get that recorded?
That's an enthusiastic thumbs up.
We ever get more than just Melissa, I'll remember to throw it to the public. No doubt. No doubt. I didn't hear anything, so. Okay, if there are no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the site plan for thirty seven hundred Cleveland Ave?
I motion to approve the site plan for thirty seven hundred Cleveland Ave.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Canack?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Whitehouse?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes.
Congratulations. My vote always matters. All right, good job, guys. Thank you so much for your patience. Hey, well, Cody still has.
Nope, we're not.
We're not done. These guys are done.
Congratulations.
You guys are done. Thank you. Have a good night. Um, so we'll go on to the communications. Looks like there's a building activity summary we can run through here real quick.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. I don't need to present a whole lot on this. I presented at the last meeting, kind of our quarterly report for end of twenty twenty-three. I presented this to the, or in a board of trustees packet, and since the information was prepared, I thought it was only fair to throw that out here for you as well. It just kind of gives you some additional highlights in addition to what you've seen in our, on our kind of standard quarterly reports for residential and commercial activities. It quantified kind of our year end totals for number of permits, number of inspections, valuations and other trend data, trend data that we track. So I threw it in here just as a means of making sure you had that information, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
The format's nice, cleaned up a little bit from the regular quarterly.
Well, thank you. I, I can't take any credit for the format, and I had some of my staff help me with that, so.
Oh, it looks good.
I'll make sure and pass along that comment of, of workmanship. I don't have any other staff communications for, for March. I say I don't have any, just as a reminder, we don't have any public hearings on our radar from the March meeting. We do, however, have from a prior meeting, the planning commission had tabled a site plan review to the March meeting, so that's on the, the schedule for March.
The March already?
It's, it's, it'll be here before you know it.
Is there, will there be an action required? Or an applicant for that one? Are we, are we seeing the site plan again? Is there another presentation or?
Yeah, the, I, I won't dive into details on the, the application itself, but it was just a reminder that, that a, a site plan that's been presented to the planning commission at a prior meeting was tabled, and it was specifically tabled to the March meeting, so just as a reminder, that's already on your agenda. So we'll bring that back. And that's, at this point, that's the only action item that, that we have on that meeting. There was a, a comment about a, a March work session. Staff is happy to prepare another work session topic. I would love some direction and guidance on what topics you would like us to bring back. If you don't have one, we could take that month as a break, or we can, staff can help generate some ideas. And whether it's for March or, or a later meeting date, are there, we, we've kind of gone over some topics that we can continue to, to bring forward. We just covered site plans tonight. Is there another application type you'd like us to do the same for? And is that format useful in the way that we're presenting it, or would you like to see that changed up a little bit?
The format's good. I agree. Yeah, format's good. The site plan was supposed to be the big one, so.
Do you want us to bring back like rezones or subdivision plats in a similar manner?
Subdivision plats could be, we've seen at least a few of those. I don't know if there's questions remaining or if that's not clear to everyone, but at least that might be worth a work session topic to just go over some information on the subdivision plat.
I'd be happy to, to do that as, sorry, I don't mean to play twenty questions, but you say that you like the format. I, I feel like I'm doing a lot of presenting and throwing the information at you, and it is your work session. Do you, would you like to have more deliberation and discussion around it, or is this, was what we prepared tonight? What'd you like to see again?
I think that it left room for discussion. I mean, I definitely asked my questions and I'm sure that other people, if they had them, would ask them too, and I feel like there wasn't room for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah, plan a slideshow for half the time roughly and leave plenty of time for discussion. I think just the nature of the work sessions, you're, it's a, it's a one-on-one session, it's for our informational purposes, so it's nice to have the guiding slideshow and the guiding, you know, conversation from you and then be able to respond with questions or at least take up some of the time with dialogue.
Okay, perfect. Well, then we'll, we'll begin preparing a, a similar work session on subdivision plats and kind of, kind of keep that in the fore. If it, I was gonna say, we'll, we'll, we, we're, we're happy to do April. We'll begin that work. If it's ready for March, we'll schedule it. If it's not, we'll look at April. Is that reasonable?
That's reasonable.
Okay.
And let's leave some time to maybe outline the next couple if we're going to continue to do these. That way you've got sixty days for potentially the next one after we talk about it.
Okay, so maybe forty minutes on subdivision plats, ten minutes on future topics and then adjourned so we're not pushing right up to the start of the next meeting?
Yeah.
Give us a, give a break.
Contain it that way, that'd be ideal.
I do think that if there's, there are more subjects that you want our guidance on, like the mural piece, those discussions could happen at some point. Touch on many things at once.
Well, this, this subject, I mean, I agree with you about it. It's, it's worth discussing because it came down with the discrepancy you're building. Is the windmill and the cowboy, is that advertising or is it art? Because it falls under very different. And, and that's the first time I've seen that in our community, but again, it brings up an interesting discussion, that's all.
You want to, you think you could have subdivision plat ready for March and then maybe that can be April? Kind of just some conversation on art versus signage?
Yes, I think we could probably, I think subdivisions is, is accomplishable. Art versus signage could definitely by April have kind of some base kind of information to frame a broader conversation. I would be reluctant to dive into a lot of, we could certainly have a conversation around what is art and what is not art and how to handle those different elements, but I would be, I think would be remiss if we created a lot of recommendation, guidance and changes around how does the community want to handle artwork in public places? Because I think that's a much broader conversation that we want to get public engagement on as well before making any recommendations or decisions around it. I think that's much, a much broader topic. But we could certainly frame it in the context of, from a planning commission standpoint, what is considered art, what is not considered art, what are, what are the thresholds for commercial advertising? And I can pull out some of my other nerdy land use law cases regarding signage for what constitutes a sign and how those have been vetted over the years.
Yeah, but obviously in, in the example I cited, that's on private property. It's not considered public art. I mean, it's not on the public, it's not in the, in Centennial Park, so I think in that sense, that's different, but I, I don't think we should be setting any, yeah, don't make any rules about, if you're talking about public art. Yeah, that's a can of worms. Don't do it.
At least not in one meeting. It's worth the conversation.
Even, yeah, just what we started tonight and kind of diving into that a little bit more, broad terms, we can't decide anything anyway, just murals on Cleveland. Like I said, I don't think there are that many more opportunities to do what the two, the two businesses have already done. But if anybody's driving around or walking, take a look, see if there's another opportunity to do that, if it's going to come up again, or is this truly it? Do we necessarily care if they face Cleveland? I don't know that I do.
Yeah, if, if you think about it, most of the buildings were either historically commercial, like think about the Wellington Grill, had a bunch of glass in the front. There's, there's no place to put a mural in my mind, and that would be true for a lot of those smaller scale buildings. They just, they don't lend themselves to it.
Clearly don't have artists on, on the planning commission. That, that glass can be painted over. You could, you could put your mural on it. So.
That's probably why we need to decide now that that's not okay to do.
I think that there's reasonable limits, but it, it would come with informed, you know, discussion and, and context for what would be permissible and what would not be. I do think that any, any physical object could be covered with artwork, and artwork is viewed very differently by different viewpoints as to what is acceptable and what is not acceptable and what is consistent with the design theme and what is not. And not to dig into it tonight, but I, I do think it's worthy of additional conversation and, and engagement.
Do they need to come to town and get a permit to put their art up?
No, and that's, that's part of the, that's part of the, the conversation is, you know, artwork is not regulated, but buildings and facades are, and that's, that's kind of where that conversation, I think, around the downtown design guidelines comes from is you, you know, regulations are not identified to regulate the content of a message or to prescribe what is acceptable art or not, but there are strong views about how a downtown should look, and that's a broader topic than just the art or the, or the messaging. So that's why I think it's, it's definitely worthy of additional conversation and, and identifying what is the desire for a downtown district. Is it one, do we want to have a, does the community want to have a, a downtown quirky eclectic feel, or does it want to remain more historically natural, those body and trim color for paints that are identified in those design guidelines? That's a, a topic that's not going to be a one meeting type of decision.
I'm wondering if when we do decide to bring this discussion forward in terms of just sign versus art, we want to have input from Main Streets and what their vision moving forward and what they're working towards as far as maybe a strategic plan and vision for the downtown area might be, just to inform our ourselves.
Just talking, just talking, just talking. Fair enough, staff?
Probably more than fair. That's enough to keep us busy for, for March and April on work session topics. And real quickly, I, I'm sorry, I, I said I didn't have a lot to share for communications, just as a reminder, there are a couple of planning commission terms that are coming up in April. The, the vacancies are not yet advertised, but just as a reminder, the town's policy is whenever a, a term is coming to an end, that, that position is considered vacant and it's advertised as there are open seats on the planning commission or the other boards and commissions, so we will be beginning that advertisement process coming up. I believe the, the terms that are up in April are Commissioner McCaffrey and Commissioner Whitehouse. So just as a reminder, if you intend to, to reapply to be on the planning commission again, we will be seeking applications for those two seats and all applicants, whether new or desiring to return, have to go through the same process, so we'll be in communication if you'd like to continue.
New now.
It's a new day. Though I think the last time you were reappointed, Bert, was the first year I started here, so six years ago, so times have changed. I think that's it. I don't have any further communications, Chair. Thank you.
Perfect, yeah. Keep the, keep the open chairs in mind if you know anybody, depending on how this goes. Okay, anything else? Perfect, adjourned.